Everyone should have a copy of the minutes from October 2nd.
Motion to approve the minutes from October 2nd, suspend the meeting.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Should have a copy of that in front of you. Is there any additions, corrections?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The President is here. Take over the meeting. I just got rid of the people.
You did a great job.
We can actually start with more engineering.
Alright. Mark? How are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you.
We have 4-8, 2018 Street Project, Task Order Number 5, More Engineering. Talk, tell us about that, Mark.
Well, this is a task order to do the design of the street project, all the way from project development through bidding. This will get us up to the point where we have a contractor on board and award of that contract. Do you have any questions in particular about the scope or the pay hours or anything that's in front of you all? I'll do my best to answer.
So everybody got that from Monty? And so if we have any thoughts or... It seems like every time I drive around town, I see something new that I think we need to apply, apply to, but... Any questions for Mark? So if to proceed then, we need to approve this task order.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Wolf.
Second.
And a second by Stern. Questions? So how much, what does this lock us into, Mark, as far as the project? Is there any movement from there? Because we don't have the, we don't have everything exactly outlined, do we, the way we?
No, that's true. I spoke with Pace, who you approved to do the televising. They're scheduled to be here on Wednesday of this week. And we should have their reports two weeks after that. So there's that. And as far as the geotechnical, of course, the field work has been done. And we should get their report by the end of the week.
Now, the cores and the streets that they put?
Right. Now, we did get preliminary information from them. So we've been able to, you know, kind of review that and assess what they found and how we think would be best to, you know, to approach it. But the asphalt thicknesses that they found range basically anywhere from an inch and a half to I think like five and a half inches. So it's kind of all worth the place.
That'll come us in the form of a booklet for the first, for streets and... You have questions? Discussion?
There had been a fair amount of going around the city identifying, prioritizing streets and everything like that. Was that, has that been something that we had paid for before, or was that wrapped up in preliminary design costs?
Um, most of that, I think, had been paid for before.
Okay. So what we're looking at then here on the preliminary design would be everything that occurred after, after that was all done and paid for?
Yeah, it's basically, well, you have the geotech and the sanitary, but it's establishing the various limits of what we want to do and where that's going to happen. So we did do the visual assessment. Now that we can start getting some of the geotech information, and once we get that final report, we can start saying, okay, these are exactly what we want. Millinow related, this is going to be chip seal, this is going to be, you know, full depth mill.
And that's still part of the preliminary design, or that's moving into final design?
Well, the way we look at it is that's part of the preliminary. When, once we get into the final design, that's more actually producing the drawings.
Okay.
You know, and cutting the sheets and everything, and getting those into a bid set, basically. But the preliminary design is to identify the areas, see what we want to do, establish the criteria. It's going to be meeting with you folks to make sure that we interpret things right and are doing what you want to see done. I think there's, you know, there's mention of a public meeting at one point, so we included that. So...
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Rule call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion passed. Carry, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. One, Mr. Jerry, I didn't know if you wanted to, I did work up the resolution of necessity for this project. If you wanted to get that published, there's a 30-day period where people can protest. So based on what they want to do as far as bidding, if we could get this published, like within the next week or so, we would be able to determine sufficiency of protest before the end of the year. Or actually by December, so we could then advertise for the bids, the 21 days we need to advertise.
Right, okay. So we could do that this evening, still?
You can do that prior to...
And still give everybody the 30 days to?
Yeah.
Okay. And that would be, that would take up to what meeting?
That would be at the November 20th meeting. Well, no, the first publication wouldn't be until the 19th, so it would still be the December 4th meeting. Unless you have a special one. So does that move out then, your guys' design schedule then? You talked about the project development, preliminary design for the November 20th meeting for approval there?
Assuming that there's no protest or anything of that nature, it shouldn't affect us.
So you would, you would design as though there were no protest?
Right.
And then we would tweak if we needed to, based upon public response? Okay.
Okay, well then that's good. Alright, do you want, you have?
I didn't set the hearing date on there, but yeah, we either have to go November 20th or a special date if you wish, but November 20th would still give us time to do it.
Okay.
Our special meeting that we're having, what is the earliest we could? We're having a special meeting already on October 27th? The 30th. 30th? Next Monday, or the Monday after next. But you have to have so much notice out there before you can have a public... Yeah, this one, there's a 30-day protest period.
That can't change either. No, then I think it will help our timeline, and if we do this now, and it won't affect our community in any way to observe this or to come and have discussion or protest. So I think that's a good idea. So at this time, then let's discuss the resolution of necessity for the street project, which would have to happen if the, we do this at the next two weeks from now, we bring this up. So this just talks, this discusses the reasons and reasons why we're doing it, and lays out the mapping of the district.
Missed published in the Hazlen's start for the next two weeks.
Yeah.
And then we would have open forum discussion, that's around the 30th. Okay. No, actually, that would be on November 20th. November 20th, excuse me.
Now, that didn't have to be put on this agenda, did it? Casey? Hold on, so then I guess you must be like leaning towards doing the whole entire project, right? I think we're, that's feeling ambitions or leaning towards entire, entire thing.
But over the course of a two-year timeframe, correct? Well, and you can always, depending on how your bids come in, you can always change the scope of the projects. Sure. Yeah, but we're directing them to design as though we're going after it in its entirety.
Yeah, I think we want to design it all at one time, so we'd have to do, go through the whole process again to do secondary design or... Or how do you even say, what half of it would be?
Well, I mean, we could break it out such that, you know, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and bid them both. And depending on how the numbers come in, you could say, well, we're just going to do one this year.
Sure.
Or if the numbers are good, you might just say, let's do them both. I mean, we can break that out.
Were you thinking preliminarily that the entire scope is doable, construction-wise, in a single season?
Yes. If we get this thing out on the streets, you know, December, January, and we get somebody lined up and onboard, yeah, I mean, of course, a lot, obviously, is dependent on weather, but you know, sooner he can get, you know, they can get started in the spring. Yeah, I think.
So right now, Mark, contractors kind of know it, like we talked about earlier, it's an eight to 10-year low in asphalt prices right now. They, they know that for probably this next six, eight months, but not for the next year and a half, I'm sure. So it's kind of, that's going to be a hard thing to bid, to know what's, you know, the oil patch can all of a sudden explode, and we're going to have all kinds of work out there, and we're going to have a hard time getting contractors again. That's probably tough for them to bid, bid that way, isn't it?
Well, they would, I mean, depending on how we set it up, you know, you could bid just one phase of it, whatever portion of the city you want to do, and then just bid it again next year for the second phase. You know, I mean, like I say, we can be flexible with that.
Does your experience say there's any benefit to just splitting it up like that, in terms of what type of bid that we would get from?
In this environment, I would say there would be no advantage, just because like you mentioned, the prices have been, I hesitate to say historically, but they've been very low.
I guess I'd like to just see it all at once, because you don't know what the price is going to be for two versus one.
Yeah.
The whole piece of the pipeline.
Casey, were you thinking the whole scope too?
Yeah. You know, I've heard, I guess, comments from those like residents, you know, maybe when you throw up, this project is going to be a $9 billion project, you know, maybe asphalt, how much of the stuff is going to be, so it's going to be pretty high. But, you know, all this work, it does need to get done, you know?
Yeah. And the specials will be there in one year or in two-year time for that, so.
You know, too. I know that we kind of always talk about having, having like a public meeting. Just making up our line, that's what we're going to do, but yeah.
I think once that's your final design, or at least your design's done, then a guy can at least approach the public and tell them.
Yeah, and then we can have mapped out and say, here's the entire, you know, have a big map and show people what they're looking at doing, where, extent of things, so. Alright, so then at this time, I will entertain motion for the, to approve the resolution for necessity.
So moved.
Motion by Hiller.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Rule call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried. And that'll be a 30-year. For those of you that are wondering, what 30-year special says? Alright, 5A. We have a next river presence forever rat fall request.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Wolf. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, thank you. 7A, building permit with variance request from Craig Smith. Craig, come on up, or just, you have any, any other comments you want to make about this, or there's a pretty much clear?
Yeah, show us a little bit on your picture. I was trying to get a, get an idea when I was looking at where you were looking to put it in the very back part, or?
Yeah, I'd like to put it in the back of this corner here, but there's a 25-foot setback, so. I don't know how many of you would have garages in your backyard, but you have to pull them way up 25 feet. It just sticks out in your yard so much, so. I was hoping to have the variance to push it back for a reasonable amount.
Is that alley access site?
No.
Do you need access it from the side?
Yes.
Right on there. Side of your existing.
That's Smith's left one, east side of the house.
And who's behind you, Craig?
Don and Sandy Ritter, mainly, and then Brody Brandt is just this short little piece here, he's over here.
So the covenant, the covenant in that neighborhood does say 25 foot. The city ordinance is... City does not enforce covenants.
Right.
So we, you know, the homeowners or the homeowners association enforces covenants. So do we have? I guess, is there a format, or do you just talk to our neighbors, Craig, or what's that?
From what I understand, if the city went okay less than 25 feet, then I could go, would have to go visit and get a majority approval.
I think that's the way the covenants typically works. And if we, we approve it, then you can go get signatures from the neighbors. And if everybody's happy with it, then, then he gets to proceed. So we, the variance that we would be looking at is a little bit less, right?
15-foot variance, yes. My understanding was a 15-foot variance would want to be 10 feet from the back property line?
Yeah, reasonable amount, I mean, something that, but... And there are other backyard buildings in the neighborhood that I think are larger than 144 square feet. That's allowable, doesn't matter where you want to put them.
That is pretty old real well.
So the city says 15 feet and 6 feet, is that correct?
That's the requested variance.
Correct.
So he would be 10 feet from the back property line, 4 feet from the side property line?
Great, but our, our stipulation says you normally have to be 15 feet from the property line.
On the back property.
On the back property line, and 6 from the side. He wants to do 10 and 4, okay.
You said this is Brody's, Craig?
No.
This is that big one up on the top.
Top, right.
Great.
So just this little piece here.
Okay, no, okay.
What is, what is on the property line right now? Do you have bushes, trees?
I have lots of bushes, trees, backyard neighbors. And what did you say, the normal city?
Well, what I'm reading here, I believe, is that the variant, or not the variance, the requirement for the city is 15 feet from the back property line?
Exclusive of the 10-foot alleyway. So it's 25.
So it's 25 feet, just like their covenants?
Just like the covenants.
I thought ours was a little bit more lenient than the covenants. So we're still looking at a fair variance here.
So then even, even if there's another alleyway, so that...
It's still considered because there is utilities. That's my understanding.
Is there utilities and stuff through there right now?
Yes.
And that's where alley space normally would be, in that 10-foot spot?
20 feet, actually 10 feet.
10 on the other side, okay.
And then Monty, would Craig have to come back to us with those?
No, if you've approved the variance, it's going to be between him and the other property owners as far as the covenants.
So what would it do, Craig? We said we'll give you the normal, the 15 instead of 25. You could live with that?
It's not.
Is he a 10-foot variance, exclusive of the...
Right, so you want to be 15 feet off, we give him a 10-foot variance.
Correct, okay. There's one. I would think that if you have utilities or anything running through there, you want to be at least 10 feet off of there where those utilities are going through, because you certainly don't want to put a garage on top of.
Exactly, yeah.
Do they put fiber?
So your intention would be to be at least that far in anyway?
Yes, I would be fine with the 15 feet off that side.
And there's nothing that goes along the, this side?
I did talk to my owner on the east side, Joel Presswell, and he's fine with whatever.
Because that, the neighbor had an issue with Hiller Ruth's garage.
He mentioned that, but he says he's fine with.
Okay, alright. You must bake better than me. Okay, what's the wishes of the board?
And you're looking to put it in the, the northwest corner?
Northeast.
Northeast, okay, so over towards him on that side, okay, gotcha.
Make a motion that we approve the, correct, with the 15 feet?
That he'll set at 15 feet from the property line of the real property line?
Okay. And then there's also variance from the side.
And 4 feet from the side?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Hack.
Second.
Second from Wolf. Discussion? So Craig, you have to go back to, from Bill Johnson, this whole list, and ask the entire subdivision then? Or just your couple block area for this approval, or?
I don't know, that's what we're asking you. We didn't know if we had to just ask the surrounding neighbors?
You'll have to, if you, if you guys have a board with your neighborhood that is responsible for updates to the covenants. I know if you ask Danny, he'd tell you how many people you got to go around and talk to, because I know he talked to more than just the adjacent neighbors. Is, is my understanding, so.
Craig, Craig, you want to come up here?
I got that something.
Oh, oh, you got this one, Craig?
The, the new one, I think, yeah.
Okay.
The old one.
Alright, so you have that?
Yeah.
And then this one too?
Yeah, that's the new one, yeah.
Okay, where it says you're an unmarried person?
Yeah. Too late.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't know who's your, the foreman of your, this covenant that you have to talk to, but you're right, Danny must have done it.
I know, when, when I was a member of a neighborhood association before, there was, there was a board associated with that that then provided approvals and things.
This one is organized. This one's, they're just out there. It's like covenants of West Hayes, there's covenants, but there's no...
So since the city doesn't have jurisdictional, that who it?
Anybody who...
Guston's name is, Guston's name is on here, that live in that area, and...
Is there a direction within the covenants that says if you're seeking approval for anything?
Doesn't.
No, but if, because it's, it's not organized, if any one owner wants to enforce the covenants, they can try to enforce them.
Okay.
So you, you take your chances if you violate the covenants without consent, that somebody can challenge.
So then, before you spend a lot of money, you want to go talk to everybody that's governed by this covenant?
Well, that's what some of the...
Or you're a gambler.
Not that's true, you know, which they have this list of people.
Oh, okay.
So it's a majority now, is what you need, right?
I don't know if, if one person doesn't like it, does that, I don't know.
I don't know if it says that in there either.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's what I can tell you.
Well, from our point of view, I guess we've got a, okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any more discussion? Casey?
So then is your neighbor on the east side okay, like with only the, only the other four foot of property line?
Yeah, he said he didn't care what we did.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Anything else you guys want to add?
No, other than that there are other buildings out there, I think that, so I don't know. Evidently, it doesn't work to go back and find a building permit from the owner.
I guess, right, Monty? There are some that apparently got variances back then, somewhere along the line too, because they're within the 25 feet. You know, maybe the difference here is it's kind of hidden in the backyard versus out there on the boulevard, oversized. Might be the difference with your, with your next door neighbor. Maybe just he likes you better or something.
We have a motion and a second. Rule call.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried. Good luck with your neighbors coming here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have one question then. You said we have to contact the neighbors, but do we have to go through this like Hiller Ruth's did? Have it all notarized and everything, or do we just have to get them?
Not for our sake, you don't.
Oh, you don't?
I don't believe so.
I'm not a lawyer, but I would think for your personal protection, that may be prudent. Then you have documentation of the neighbors at the time of proving, I don't know.
Hack, you give some advice on the city's dime? Okay?
It's because you got to work with us all the time.
This is the better path, so there's also conflict and mob.
What are the abstracts? Alright, 8A. I guess I'll, I'll wait on the reports to just, there's more about, it comes down to fancy, but other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Water sewer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Yeah.
On October third, Southwest Water had lost service to hazen and, and. People in the area and. And the company was contacted to the hospital, the city, and told to watch the water usage and then later on the evening. It's been about like five o'clock or so, water, water was, I think it's, I guess, restored by the water tower again. So, I'm just glad it was a short ordeal and, you know.
Yeah.
It was something for us to maybe, maybe just like look at. It was the one thing, you know.
Well, I know there was some discussion in email about the level that we retain or maintain within our water tower.
Yeah.
And it sounded like some evaluation was done there to determine what we had there and how it would last and whether we needed to take any additional measures beyond just the, the large users.
Yeah.
And it seemed prudent at the time that we didn't need to go any further, but.
Well, I guess, I was educated.
Discussion as to whether or not high enough is high enough. I don't know.
Yeah, well, the education I got from Jake Jacobson is that we have three fourths full tower all the time.
Three fourths?
Yeah, which he thinks will last the community on regular usage, three days. So, you know, obviously we'd no, we weren't irrigating yards heavily at that point. And I guess we talked about doing a reverse nine one one, also that, that the community know that, to regulate that a little bit. But I think ninety nine seven people don't even know we were on lock or didn't have water service that day.
Right.
So it is kind of scary to know that, boom, we're, we could be down, and that break was between the lake and water treatment plant, Martha's app, so.
So per argument's sake, three days for three quarters means four days for full?
Well. As we get older though, the water tower, the water pressure goes down.
That's true. The stone ground be teed rare.
You know, you know, we got a fire too, you know, and that's gonna, that water tower goes down. Can't lock, but.
And in three days' time, we can't get our, our whole system up and running. It'll take about two weeks, part of that day.
You're actually prohibited, you may enjoy that under the contract, Southwest.
Even, even if they can't provide.
Like, what kind of obligation do they have for us for restoration of the system?
They got a, you got a jail free car. No liability.
Well, I, I guess, I'd rather answer to my community saying we try to hook up our own water, but if they can't provide it, then good luck slapping our hands for that one.
Even if separately we get the, even if you're a tree, if you're a quarter dollar tree, for use that could boil and whatever, through our system, is important.
As soon as we have to have the health department come take samples.
Probably be advisable to have.
An emergency plan.
Have an emergency plan.
Maybe even try to do it once.
So maybe that's actionable from this discussion is, is we have the, the folks put together for, for evaluation and discussion and emergency plan. Situation where we wouldn't have water restored within that three day window, or whatever time it would be to where it's no longer serviceable to us.
Absolutely.
You don't think you'd actually want to try and do it?
Southwest, yeah, just the system.
You're not aware of a, an emergency plan currently?
Ronnie?
I think there was some talk that if we did use our well and got in the system, contaminate their system, and that was one of the reasons that.
Sure.
And he said if we come out with boiling water, how long do that take to get that contamination out of the system?
Right. Yeah, I'm sure there's lots of issues that we, that may concede right now. Yeah, I agree, it's a great idea to get a emergency plan drawn up. What, what it takes to get it started up? Do we have the filters? Do we have the chemicals? Do we have the? When's the last time we've exercised valves in there? And they probably, they probably do, we don't have no idea, but.
So something you think we can come up with in-house?
Well, yeah. Before Dick retires. Alright, Casey? Streets Cemetery? Oh, this, hold on, let's back up real quick. Mark, have you ever run across that, where, you know, coming up with a plan like that to restart up a system?
I can't say that I've come across that. I'm sure there's folks in the firm that have, but it's kind of an unusual situation. Where the rural water, you know, ceases functioning when you're in the prime. Because like Pat said, you've got contractual issues, you've got, the health department would absolutely have to get involved. I mean, that, that's unique. Now, I know in the, one of the reports that Monty had sent me a year ago, whenever, I mean, I know there was talking there about second water tower. In some story, now I know that was for pressure and whatnot, but I mean, as much as storage. Yeah, as far as getting a plant up and running again, I'd have to look into that.
Well, if we need help, we might call upon you guys if you have to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have several folks.
You know, there's another thing too, is if you have a water tower failure with a main line coming out of the water towers and, you know. And I think in the plans, it did like talk about like a second storage tank.
Right, an elevated tower.
As for like maintenance as well too, you know, on, on.
Well, you bypass that. I mean, you don't need the second tank to maintain the initial. I mean, you, you can bypass the water and everything while that's being done. That, and cities do that all the time, but only have one tank. So that, that would be an issue. But, but you know, if you're talking about pressure and storage, those types of things, then yeah, you might want to consider the second tower. But I'll look into see what, what it takes to restart a plant and what that process might look like, letting you know.
Streets Cemetery?
Just a couple things. I talked with Dave in Rod, probably was one or two, last week, week before. Everything got fixed on the Sterling dump truck, but Dave said, maybe front tires probably wouldn't make a walk through for DOT inspection. So I went out there, looked, and I, I agree there. I said, do you think we can live through it? He's like, well, probably can live through, but you may not make the walk through to get a DOT report. So I'll give prices on the wide and the barrels. So Rod, I don't know if you got any of these in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay? They've got two quotes for wide and narrow tires from Fitter and from Senex. And they've talked a little bit more, I guess all of the old international have wide, we have wide tires and rims out there from that old international. And I believe the Freightliner, did that have wide ones on, do you recall? Anyways, at least one truck had wide tires on. I mean, in my experience back home, wide tires, disability was there, but it pushes more than it costs you.
So it matched with snow?
Right. I think if the right person may be handling it, it'd be alright, but I don't know. So anyway, and, and these tires, the wide tires are probably three to, they're about three, four hundred dollars more a piece. So, anyways, Fitter, I'm just gonna give you the price of the narrow ones. Fitter was on the truck, eight fifty five ninety two, and off the truck, eight thirty five ninety two. And Senex was seven twenty seven. And I don't know if you guys are partial to brands?
I don't think it's bad.
So I'd like to make a motion that we go with narrow tires from Senex, that's seven twenty seven total, or a tire? That's total.
That's total, yeah.
Okay, on two, seven twenty seven. And we do have, the, the Third X rims are the same size, so we don't have to give rims, just tires, balance. So we can use those, so that saves us a lot. So I can make a motion that we get the narrow tires from, that are Roadmaster, RM one eighty, for seven twenty seven, seven hundred twenty seven dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by hack to purchase two new tires, mounted and balanced for seven twenty seven from Senex. Second, second by Stern, discussion?
And Rod, that should be everything on that truck?
I think so, we're still waiting on the wider.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mandating schedule and appointment with DOT to get certified on it, is that?
No, we're gonna go over the mandate. They do DOT inspections.
Okay.
So, but yeah, Free did, I did chat with, or Dave chatted with Free the day of coffee. Free said he got liners available, he just doesn't have the room in the shop, and he's a couple guys down. So he's, he's gonna have it done before, so it flies. He said, well, that's the main thing, I said, just stay on top of him until they have some way to go.
So we go, we set a truck down by the, maybe you don't want to get the truck out of there.
Stay on top of it. Yeah, that's the first thing, and then in.
Oh, we got, we got a motion?
Oh, sorry.
We got a second, any more discussion? Rule call.
Ken.
Hi.
Stern.
Alright.
Hiller.
Hi.
Whoa.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried.
And then the, of course, the Freightliner's got that heavy duty plastic liner, and Dave showed me, where there was a band-aid fixed quite a while on the outside. And it's on the driver's side, I crawled up in and looked at it, and I think we can mandate it, so the, it's kind of a horseshoe gouge out of there. I, I told him, if you guys drill holes on the bigger portion of the box and suck it down, I think it'll suck down level. Because he investigated wider, new wider box, and that company has no longer business, so. How long the band-aid will work, I don't know, but something to keep in the back of our minds, we may have to, we'll replace the box on the Freightliner.
So we can repair that in-house?
Yeah, yep, yeah. And then the third thing we were talking as well, and I think this came up in discussion before we got the new dump truck. They're coming up on six years for the garbage truck replacement, and just food for thought. When it comes time, I'd like to take the old Sterling garbage truck that has roughly about sixty thousand miles on it. Sell that compactor, put locks on that, and make that a dump truck instead of sending it down the road when that time comes. I think that would make the fleet pretty sharp then. Because that.
Sixty thousand miles, pretty low for a comp truck.
Yeah, and it's automatic.
Yeah, and you know, we get, get the pay in, might as well keep it.
Yeah. So, that's just a food for thought, that's not what's doing right now. And I, I don't know, Monty, if you know, are we coming up on six years to rotate, or are we still doing that?
The last one was spec and bid in two thousand twelve, so that's basically around the corner.
Okay.
If you're gonna replace that six years.
But the last one, though, it went like longer than that, didn't it? I mean, it was like ten years old, wasn't it?
I don't see.
I don't think so.
I'm not sure. I thought it was longer than that. Not bothered.
Again, just food for thought.
That's good to keep.
Because sanitation products, I think Dave said it was, they'd be interested in buying that compactor from us. So, you can probably make a guy and put a guy back on, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So, anyhow. That's really all that I got.
Okay. Thank you. Finance busing?
Nothing, not this time.
Okay, police, fire, forestry?
I will address under new business, the police department issue, but nothing else to report at this time.
Buster, HCD?
I want to share some information on Pioneer Project. There's a lot of contractors over there this week, I think they're going really pretty well. Some timelines, Thursday, they're gonna be delivering appliances, and they'll get, those are going to get installed next week, Monday, starting Monday, I'm not sure how long it will take. The carpet layers were there today, will finish up the, the long runs, all the rooms are done, but the long runs are always. Electricians are still there, they were supposed to be out there, but there's still plenty of patient touches on some things. Gutter guys were there today, landscapers are there, they're gonna, the landscaping will probably be most of them be done, I'm thinking, this week. So they're making some very good progress. If you've been bothering some of the concrete, it's been poured. That's really looking nice. Some dates that you might be interested in, the twenty fourth, which is next Tuesday, from this upcoming Tuesday. My HCD group is going over there at four thirty to do a kind of a pre-work. So if any of you commissioners would like to come and join us, you're welcome to do that. And then on the twenty fifth is when we're tentatively scheduled to have the architect go through and do the punch list. And then on the twenty seventh is supposedly the grand opening ceremony. And we're hoping that everything will fall into place, and of course, we can't put any residents in there until we get a typical occupancy, which. But I think they're moving really along with quite well now, so. So I'm hoping that, and we do have, they have had some interest early in the units. My list dwindled a little bit from what I have, some people, because, because of the timeframe and the weight, actually ended up getting into some apartments. Couple parties got into apartments over a year, which would have been, they would have been really good candidates over here. So that's just the nature of the game, you know, so. We'll just have to, my management team will just have to get along, because it's improving. So, questions?
Are you on the plants, or are you guys doing the TVs too, then?
We talked about that today. The other thing that we're, I believe we will be doing is, I believe we're going to also be providing basic cable for the tenants. And it looks like, from the original estimate on the rent, we're gonna probably be able to drop that at a tenant. I'm going to say, you know, maybe, maybe in the neighborhood of a one seventy. On the single units, on the, that's not etched in stone.
Housing finance has to prove that, right?
I mean.
Housing finance?
So we're hoping that we can do that, and, and part of that is, is that we're saving some substantial dollars by going to local management versus outside the area. And so that's where we hope to make up the difference in terms of that, so.
Then on that west alleyway, I saw you have the new apron port on the north side, looks really nice, into the alley. Are you gonna bring some more over there and then, and then need, want some of that?
Yeah, we'll want the crush, Dave, you know what? I'm not the detail guy, I love that. I'm not sure what the next step is, if there needs to be some fill.
It looks like it needs to fill.
Probably some filling there before the crush gets down.
Alright. Alright.
So I'm sure that Darryl would just work it on. Okay, so, okay.
Other questions? Thank you. Nine A, Vision West membership. So we've been going off of the HCD's membership to receive discount rates and some training and whatnot. Did you put this out here, Monty?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, it's just a matter of if we wanna be a part of the Vision West group, and it outlines some of their benefits on the back there as far as, you know, some of the voting privileges at their meetings, free ads in their newsletter, discounts to trainings. Those types of things, depending on what's the level, you'll join their, their organization.
Well, I gotta be honest, I've not made, I think I've only made one Vision West in last year. I rely on Buster to be our liaison for that, so it's nice that HCD, Buster covered that, but.
Actually, if I could just speak to that, just a little bit, you know, actually, I originally got on board because of the county, I was the county representative. And then, of course, when they went and they had to seek some additional funding sources, so they went to the membership format, they increased the membership format. So basically, HCD, I signed, I'm a member now officially as HCD, HCD member. And they've kind of changed some of the way the voting privileges are. Anybody that now is a member that is in that particular category wants a few more, and you can, then you're a voting member if you participate in, you know, very events. Now, the thing about it is, if they try to move their, I wanted to say by monthly, but they're not by monthly, they're every, can't remember, the face-to-face meetings. They move them around to different locations in the process state, so sometimes it gets difficult. For instance, they have a meeting, face-to-face meeting scheduled now in Crosby that's coming up in November, so that's a pretty good old hike. Yeah. Yeah, definitely, so. So yeah, but I do know this, if they, if the city would be so kind as to buy membership, they'd be most appreciative because they are. You know, they're just like everybody else, they're trying, they're trying to make ends meet, and they, we've done some really very good work. I think in terms of where things are at and the projects they're working on. And, you know, their, their one real main focus is, we're really hitting the education part of it now. You know, they have, for instance, we have the planning and zoning meeting that's coming up on the twenty-sixth, which is a killer on the marijuana issues. And they're just trying to get ahead of that eight ball a little bit in terms of where some of that's at, relative to where things are at. And if you have followed that at all, you know that what's happened in other states, that's been a big bunny maker for lots of states. But Monty put us a moving system, well, we're kind of being cautious, like we typically would be, which is fine. But I do know that the county folks, there are gonna be some county folks at, at planning and zoning. I'm not sure about locally, I asked Shannon, there are some going out.
Shannon is.
Yeah, Shannon I know is going out, I'm not sure about any other members or where any other members going.
So she'll go as a non-member, member?
It's, realistically, it's just kind of offered, you know, for registration, through just a letter of registration. And you don't have to be a member for that.
Okay.
No, that's a different. She can tag on, I'm sure, on the HCD membership.
Are most communities in Western North Florida Buster, are they even members of Vision West, do you know?
Well, I don't wanna say, when you say most, I'm not gonna say most, but there are, there's some that are, you know, and I, I'm not sure right offhand, or I guess I'm not sure of that list. You know, so there were of the nineteen counties. I wanna say that there were about twelve, twelve counties that came aboard.
Well, sir, I think it'd be awesome if we had just a list of what Vision West has been doing and kind of, you know, someone walked up to one of the board members and said, I see a member of Vision West, what do they do for the city of Hazen? I guess it'd be, might be hard for this group to tell, tell people what they do, what they do for the city of Hazen, other than what you just mentioned, but. So.
Okay.
If we can do that.
Yeah, I can do that, I'll, what I'll do is, I'll say.
Just educate us a little bit first.
Yeah, I'll say just a little bit, what they're all on, what their main projects are.
Okay, perfect, thank you. You have any questions, comments?
Does this need to be acted on within a particular time?
No.
So you can basically join anytime.
Right.
How much, how much was that?
Ours would be five hundred dollars just for the basic level, based on the city.
Okay. I know in the big picture, that's not much, but.
It adds up.
It adds up, yep. Nine B, two thousand eighteen visitors guide, four hundred fifty dollars. I believe this does truly affect us quite a bit and benefit us. I would like to see this be. Do the, do the four fifty inside cover. Do you have any other information on that, Monty?
No, you know, sent out what was in there last year, I believe I sent it out to you as well. It's pretty much a standard ad for us here on the inside cover, about meeting people as far as Hazen and some of the activities that we have.
It's good marketing and promotional. We would need a motion though, to do, to do the ad.
Some.
Motion by Wolf?
Second.
Second by Pillar? Discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. Ten A, fence slash crushed material. All right, so after the last meeting, when the board approved up to five thousand dollars to spend on the fence, Ron went down and visited with West Coast Lumber and kind of redid it to have, be more of a commercial type fencing. And to make it a little bit bigger also, to square it off, bigger corner posts. And then the, the brackets on top of the posts, which alone were a thousand dollars, just with brackets to hold barbed wire. And then included barbed wire also, so the, and then they had a double swing, ten-foot swing fence opening on, I believe, correct, Ron?
I'm not sure, swinging fence or?
Oh, okay, I thought it was swinging, but.
Well, you can swing offset hinge, so.
Offset hinge, so it's swinging like that. So. In order to make it a more commercial, just a five-foot or regular fence would be seventy-seven hundred dollars instead of. One thought I had to justify that is, if we did make it a more secure and better fencing area, that we could possibly use it as a potential spot for impound location. If we, when we start getting rid of that gravel pile, we start eating away from, from the south, going to the north. And then use that south end for, for a vehicle, or whatever else we need, campers or whatever else we need to, for impound. And I did talk to Monty today, see, I have to visit with our insurance to try to enter, to see if, whether we, if we need a light or a camera or anything else out there. For safety or security for impound, but I think if we're gonna do that, then I think it's be worthwhile to spend a few more dollars to make that a multi-use area. So I'm not sure anybody else's thoughts are on that. Something we've, we've thrown around in the past about impound area. But.
Did you find out what kind of liability we have? Or if you need cameras, or?
We don't have to put anything else, according to Mike's, as long as we've made reasonable efforts, if somebody breaks in there, we've done our due diligence by having the secure fence with the protector around the top, so. He said he didn't, obviously, you can always be liable for something, but he, he didn't see that it would create any additional liability.
Okay, and at the landfill, they don't have camera out there?
So the fence itself now would be a chain link type fence? Is that correct? When I, when I see this galvanized fabric?
Chain link.
Chain link fence?
And just more commercial grade?
I know, Jan, initially, when I talked to Ron, I think he had just measured around, left about forty yards outside the pile. And I, I just meant what kind of triggered that, I just mentioned, you know, it'd be nice to square that southwest corner off a little bit more so you can pull in with the truck and leave all the overscatter, if you will, in there, you know? And I think that's what I talked to Jerry Monty.
So, so now we're looking at seventy-seven hundred dollars total?
Correct.
For material?
You have any thoughts? So, I'm not, I was at the last meeting, but obviously, we approved to go up to five thousand, was that a motion?
Yes.
So do we have to? Do you have to make them? Okay, since it was already motion made, just make a no motion to authorize more money if we want to. Okay, all right. So if that's what the board would like to do, great, if you wanted to stick with the original five thousand and, and keep the way we had it for the gravel, it's, it's up to the board. I think it's, I think it adds value for possible opportunity for us.
I make a motion that we add an additional twenty-seven hundred dollars to the original five thousand dollar limit for the acquisition materials for the fence.
Motion by Pillar to make it full of seventy-seven hundred dollars. Second by Stern, discussion? So when you go talk to James Saylor, say it's seventy-seven hundred, and we're not, we don't need any extra nothing?
Okay.
Any discussion? Hey, we have a motion, a second, roll call?
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. Insurance claim, police department, water damage.
Pillar?
We had an unfortunate incident occur over at the police station down in the lower level, and we had water escaping from, the water kept running, I guess, in the toilet?
In the basement.
Down in the basement. And when, when they went in during the middle of the night, I don't know if they heard noise or, or what the, what the reason was for going down into the basement, but they went down there and water everywhere. And so apparently, we tried getting in touch with, with folks local, and we ended up getting in touch with Arrow Service Team out of Washburn.
Bismarck.
Bismarck. And they were able to come up in the middle of the night then and suck the water out of there and, and put fans and stuff into place and begin some of the dry out process. They have provided us two quotes, one quote to cover the work that's already been performed, and the second quote was to remediate the, the damage. Not fix it, but just cut away from the floor up, remove heaters, remove cabinetry, undo plumbing and things like that. Get it all to the point where a subsequent contractor could come in then and, and take care of it. Monty's in the, been in the process on the original remediation plan, also contacted Dave Miller over in, in Buella. And Dave chose not to debate on it. So it's an insurance claim, and so Monty is also working on getting in touch with various contractors to take a look at it, to return it to as good, if not better, shape than, than it was before the damage occurred. And so we have a one thousand dollar deductible. So I guess with, with that being said, I would make a motion to the group that we go ahead and direct Monty to work with contractors, get a plan together for this, and submit the insurance claim, get the thousand dollar deductible, and we go ahead and get that police station back up to where it was.
Okay, that is a motion by Ann?
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion? How much water was in the basement?
They said a couple of inches or, or more. That sounds like it waked up pretty good on, on the walls and stuff there, and they're, they're not really designed to, you know, see.
Okay, any other questions? A motion and a second, roll call.
Pillar.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. Find my next item here, sorry. There we go. All right, eleven B, policy update, part-time benefits. You have the attachment that shows the health insurance seven point one, it's also up on TV there. Monty, wanna?
Well, as I informed you earlier, when we were working on the budget, when the settings to how, you know, we were approached to offering benefits to part-time employees who work at least twenty-one hours per week or more. It might be an incentive to keep some we have or to get some that we're looking for. The costs, and as I put in the notes, would be about, for the general fund would be about twenty-seven thousand dollars per year, based on who I see taking these benefits. Obviously, that could change in the future. I did mention some ways that we could probably save some money going forward to cover some of these costs, based on what we're doing with our retirement now. But I guess basically, it's, I did include these amounts in the budget that was approved. So the amounts are there if you wish to proceed with this. Again, I don't know, I know of one employee for sure that will be looking for work outside of us because they need the benefit. Whether it will help us attract other employees to our part-time positions, I don't know. But it would be an incentive, we don't, we don't pay the highest on some of these positions, so this might be an incentive enough to get some of them in then.
I know that when we posted our city positions with benefits, i- it's amazing the number of candidates that you do draw in, and I think probably one of the base reasons is because it's one of the few local jobs within the city proper here that pays out benefits. So I think if we go at it to where we provide benefits based on this, the minimum of the twenty-one hours a week, it may put us in a position to where we attract more individuals potentially for openings that we might have in the city here.
We do have seasonal, that work more twenty-one hours, and that would not include seasonal.
Would not, it would be regular per.
Right. Just, so then just mostly then, mostly then I guess, the bus drivers?
It would affect a couple of general fund city employees, bus drivers, and the library. Right now, everybody else is basically full-time or seasonal.
And then I guess, on your notes there, did it also like include that like what it would cost hourly?
I didn't include that as far as hourly. I, I did calculate on a full-time employee with a family benefit plan, if they're making twenty dollars an hour, they're only maybe thirty-four dollars with benefits.
Okay, that's what I see.
Yeah. But this would obviously be a lot less, because there wouldn't be any of the, some leave or, or retirement credit or those things on there, so.
Any other questions or concerns? You know, you bring up bus drivers, basically, it's a good point, we have a hard time finding bus drivers, the way it is. This can help attract a little bit or retain, that's, that'd be great. Alright, so then, in order to update the, the policy, we need to make a. Not, that's it, we don't need to.
Create this change in.
We don't need two readings though. Do we? So it says the policy, do we need two readings, Pat, for a policy update like this? No, okay.
No, I don't think there's anything in our policy. In fact, our policy committee has been pretty relaxed.
Busy, you've been busy?
Relaxed.
Okay.
Unbusy.
Yeah, yeah, busy with other things. Okay, alright, we don't need to, to read, so we just need to make them, have a motion update, this policy for part-time benefits thing. Motion by Wolf?
Second.
Second by Hack, any more discussion?
I guess just one question affected November first.
That's fine with me, let's. So then on the words, words of their policy, what's really gonna change? Is there anything that's, I mean, I think that's been a little already, the policy, isn't it?
Yeah, well, except the fact that we added the single plan is offered to the part-time employees, because it was just to all full-time employees.
So then, so then like this right here is not, not the policy that it is right now?
No, this is not the policy as it is, this is a different policy.
Okay, alright. Good question.
And that provides the clarity, because we call seas, we have the classification of seasonal versus part-time, yes, yeah.
Any other questions, any, any discussion? Rule call?
I'm sorry.
Oh, we have a motion, a second by Hack.
Wolf?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried. Alright, approval of bills. Get the extra, Monty?
I should just have one page, a couple of them that I entered today. The, the water heater repair work that was going on there, was that the same water heater for two different firms taking a look at it? Or was it two different water heaters on the original building that you sent that off there?
Thanks, Pat.
H two over and over did, did some work in that parts and then there was another.
H two over and over was probably the one at the city shop here.
City shop, that's what.
Got it, the second part.
So it was two different water heaters?
One was at the shop and then there was work on the dishwasher stuff here.
There's the one, there's the dishwasher, okay?
Thanks for coming, Mark.
Sure, thank you.
Kim's Client Service, Dishwasher Service Repair.
They came and checked it once it was installed and, and determined that the valve was bad, because we couldn't get it forward.
So they diagnosed the problem, so then we had Jason come in as, by the person in place, yeah. So they didn't have parts with them or anything like that.
Okay. Actually, they, actually, they were recommended by Spines.
Okay.
There was, because they were like two dishwasher, electrical dishwashers.
Yeah, I know.
Sitting ahead of Rancho on the call.
That's, Paul's still trying to get this pretty well. So I think a motion we paid, tells us, presented.
Motion by Pillar to pay the bills? Second by Stern? Rule call?
Pillar?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried, major.